Good evening, everybody. Could we have Will Thompson?
Madigan?
Present.
Ryan?
Present.
Philippa?
Here.
Cardi, it's Carson. Carson?
Turner?
Here.
Karen?
Here. Approval of the minutes from August, we're going to table that till next month because we cannot receive them. So we'll move on to staff update.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairperson. Really two updates. I want to let you know that we, Lakota has completed its public input process. I think I did forward those documents, the actual guidelines, or not guidelines, but actual public input for extensive comments. They surveyed the community over three or four months. They will be working on some new concepts for the downtown beautification projects. That will probably be displayed at the wine walk that's scheduled in September. I think September, what is it, twenty, sorry?
Twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth. So there'll be a tent for Lakota and those concepts and for the pitman property and for some of the downtown beautification projects will be displayed for the first time to the public. So obviously I'll forward to you, anything that I receive as it relates to Lakota, not only will the board members get those concepts, but the planning commissioners will also be forwarded to the concepts. So that's, as it relates to the vote board, there are no new cases that were considered by the board at the last meeting. That's all I have as it relates to updates.
Okay. And so now we go to old business, form-based code text amendment.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chairperson. Very quickly, share the screen so we can share our PowerPoint to the public. Let the record reflect that this is continuation of a public hearing pursuant to public notice in accordance with state statutes or applicable ordinances. Madam Chairperson, this matter comes before you again for continuation. As I recall, we are proposing to amend the form-based code specifically as it relates to regulating non-retail and restaurant uses, simply services and personal services and offices. At the last meeting, there was extensive discussion. We gave you presented before options. Do you want me to walk you through those options? I can do that again, but they generally have remained the same. The first option really is to prohibit offices and personal services on Main Street, again, from Lake Street to Orchard. The second option is to limit those uses from specifically offices to personal services on Main Street to 25%, maximum 25% and also those that currently exist. Another option which is a little more flexible was to allow up to 50%. And then the last option, which is to continue to stay as well for offices and personal services would be a permitted use as it is currently in a form-based code. One of the requests from one of the commissioners was to provide, commission a list of the current businesses along Main Street, again, between Lake Street and Orchard. I think there was some discussion, what constitutes retail, what constitutes service. So I did provide the commission a complete list of all the businesses. I think at their point, some of the businesses like Waldron Construction, they do sell cabinets. There is a sales tax aspect to that. So I think that's kind of a hybrid business, but we can have that discussion if you want to have that discussion this evening. So with that, I prepared a PowerPoint which I walked you through the last meeting. Kind of explains you the philosophy behind this proposed change. And with that, I'll conclude my staff report.
Thank you, Mr. McGurgen. At this time, it's Madigan.
I don't think I have any additional questions. I have read everything. I think I'm still in favor of that.
Mr. Ryan?
Oh. I'd like to get into how you're defining different things so you can tell us what, how these percentages, like under 20, you know, to 25% and that. Because, you know, your definition of say, one of some of these businesses that may look like more of a construction company more than a retail.
Mr. Ryan? I thought that originally this map that we kind of walked you through, which identifies, which is before you, which identifies the services, offices, retail. I think that our general principle was maybe a little more flexible, a little more liberal, that if, in fact, sales taxes are generated, and i.e. Rodney's Village, we generally consider that a retail.
So they could have $1 in retail sales, we're going to get some, the village will get some tax money.
Directly.
Or that is, you're going to consider them to be a retail.
That was, that was a threshold, you know? I mean, I think to be fair, the bath shop, Waldron Construction, they probably generate a substantial amount of sales tax based on just the volume and price points of their cabinets and things like that. So we do consider that retail. Clarity offices, you know, Edward Jones, architect speak for themselves, that's clearly an office. Personal services, a hair salon, clearly a, clearly a personal service. So there's only ambiguity there. I think the only real ambiguity is maybe the bath store, Waldron Construction, those types of uses. They're, to be fair, they're kind of hybrids. They do design work. You know, if you go in there and it'll design your kitchen or your bathroom. And there's obviously no sales tax generated from a professional design work. But nevertheless, there is sales tax generated. They sell cabinets and appliances, things like that. So it's really discretion of the commission, you know? We can define that a little more tightly, but again, I think that the overall philosophy here is that those stores, i.e. Waldron Construction or the bath store, do generate, you know, some traffic, people go there specifically. There's, you know, at least the concern is that some of the offices don't. I mean, as I've explained, some of the offices are simply being used as billboards.
Yep. Then I'm thinking, I mean, my opinion is, I don't think with what we're doing or what you're proposing with the retail sales is the way of, oh, eating your end results of creating foot traffic in that, in the downtown area and, I mean, that was the prime thing, is trying to create and have stores and businesses that create foot traffic in the downtown area. And I don't think maybe, maybe doing the thing with the retail versus not retail is the way to get there. Because anybody that wants to, anybody that wants to avoid this, you know, like, one business I looked at today was the printing shop.
Clearly a service.
Yeah, well, on their sign on the outside, it says apparel. Obviously, they must sell some type of apparel in there because that's what it says that up on their sign, printing, something else, and apparel. So somebody is selling a t-shirt in there, you wouldn't buy a t-shirt in a business, now that makes them a retail. So to me then, if somebody really wants to open up a business and we're going to say, well, you can't because you're not a retail, under the current definition, almost anybody could put something up for sale in their business and say, now, I'm retail now and I can, I can be here. Is what I'm saying?
No.
So that's why I'm, so I'm just saying is if, if we're going to go through all this to try to make this happen in the downtown area, I don't know if the retail way is the way to go. I don't know what way, just here, I don't have a good, a good suggestion way to do it, a different way, but I don't think the retail way is the, is the real way to go. What I, and the way we're defining it, I don't see that as the way to go either.
I mean, there are ways, you know, regarding to define retail. If you want a more defined definition, just like how we define restaurants versus a, you know, a tavern. It's based on percentage of sales, overall sales of food versus liquor. So we, you know, villages, municipalities do it all the time. There's a way of doing it. I think that, you know, to be fair, you raise a good point. A hair salon will be selling shampoo and products, but I would argue that that's really accessory. You know, it's an accessory, secondary use to the service, i.e. a cutting hair and the other ancillary services for a hair salon. I think the secondary aspect is selling product. And I think that that's true with property impressions count. The primary business there is printing. But, so I don't think it's overly complicated how to figure out what constitutes retail. I think we can, aesthetic threshold, like I said, we do it all the time between restaurants and taverns.
That's what I'm saying, I'm just saying is right now, the path, to me, the path we're going down with defining retail as, as long as you're selling something that makes you retail, I don't think that's going to lead you to the point of what your objective was, that you told us that we're trying to do here.
No, that's, that's a fair point. We can find, we can define it, we can have a more defined definition what constitutes retail.
That's all I'm just saying is I, I see it, you know, it's such a, it's a real threshold to say, now, you're retail. I'm saying as well, anybody wants to move in, they're going to say, I'll, I'll sell, I'll put something up for sale so I can, so I can have that space now.
Right now, I mean, that's, that's a good point. And I think the general philosophy is primary retail. And we can find that from a quantitative perspective. What is a primary retail business?
So that's my comment.
I'd like to remind the members to please speak into the microphone so you can be heard because we are on Zoom and some folks that may be out there may not be able to hear us. Does Sam Philippa?
Yeah, I think, you know, for, you know, I maybe had the same question, what some of these fall under, you know, like the custom drapery store. I mean, that, I haven't been in there, honestly. I know people who do their services, but I mean, is it, is this a place you can go in and walk out with something or not?
I believe they do most, I mean, they do sell fabrics.
Right.
So that, again, that's a hybrid business.
Yeah.
It's, they do upholstery and they also sell fabric, so.
So the ones that are considered to be office, I mean, obviously the architect, you know, Edward Jones, and I'm assuming HomeSmart, is that the Realtor?
Yes.
Okay. And those are like the three really that are really?
Offices, right. Clearly offices.
Strictly office, right?
Correct.
And so I know he's talking about retail, but we're really just trying to decide how many office only. I mean, to me, you know, I don't think it's, and I mentioned this last time, I don't know that it's, you know, like I said, I have been into Waldron Construction, you know, they're, they're still selling the retail. But, you know, same with, I know the hair salon is sitting empty, but again, this is, you know, there's maybe more of a service-oriented business, but it's bringing people into town. So I would just want to make sure we're not restricting those kind of retail services. You know, the groomer, the dog groomer is another, you know, example. They're bringing traffic in. So we're just strictly looking at the three there on Main Street that are solely office, right?
Right.
Okay.
Right, there's no ambiguity about the office.
Okay.
I think the question is about personal services.
Yeah.
Is upholstery a place of personal service or is it retail?
Yeah, some of them are a little questionable, you know, like the Empressance Count. So yeah, that was the only question really I had at this time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McCarty. Good evening.
Sorry, I'm late.
Okay.
Lots of weather damage from the construction, so traffic took a while to get here. So the conversation that I'm hearing and how we're defining retail versus non-retail versus service versus office. It may be three or office places downtown.
Correct.
And retail is now being redefined, subjectively looked at based on how we want to define it. Whether it has a majority portion of retail or a minority portion of retail, or whether they're reselling anything that's of value to our community. It's really, to be quite honest with you, there's only a few places within our downtown that have a significant amount of tax value for the retail services that they're providing for our community. The traffic that you're asking for again and again and again, subjective and it changes and it moves based on season, timing, placement, people, retail, sales, everything. You can, you can have a sidewalk sale and all of a sudden you've got all kinds of traffic. You can have someone doing a service with sale and their service that they're providing and you get extra traffic. You can have someone who is doing an open house for his, his architectural firm downtown and you're going to have, that. It's not based or defined upon the type of business. It's based and defined upon what the business is going to provide, do and be part of for our community. Still going back to, and I always will, that we should never take away things from, from the property owners who are back there for our community and businesses and availability for the businesses to grow and contribute to our community. We have a good mix that's down here right now. I think they've done a fabulous job. The Village, everything, within our business community communications, spreading the word that we're here, giving a good product for, for our community. Restaurants, the retail and the services, they've all been doing a great job for what we have. And it's, again, economics well-won. If it's going to survive, it's going to thrive. It's not, it's not going to be here. I just have a very hard time making a limit or change any type of dynamics that they, that they currently have in place for their space. I'll leave it at that and listen to some more.
Ms. Carsonson?
The phone? Okay. Um, I agree with Ms. McCarty and Mr. Ryan. I love the intention. I want people downtown. I want access to the community. I want increase in our properties, right? What I struggle with is that we have a need to be up here to support the support. And in doing some research, we can only provide ordinances so long as they bear a rational relation to the health, safety, and general welfare of the community. Again, taking away rights for the property owner does not do that. So I am struggling real hard with that. So I got.
Mr. Turner?
I have no additional comments at this time. I just had a quick question though. I believe it was Madigan last time brought up a question around if we were leaning option B, if we, how the number, the percentages would, would work out. So 25% versus plus the 28% today, what would that potentially look like? How would they be grandfathered in? If we come to a, a decision?
Well, clearly, you know, I don't think we did come to this position. I don't think that was clear from our discussion. You know, I think what's being proposed is obviously a 28% representation that staff has made. It's obviously legally non-conforming, those are not going anywhere. I mean, that's been from, from us from day one.
Agreed.
Nobody's forcing those businesses out. The question is, would there be additional 25% on top of that 28%? Obviously, if those, that those 28% are converted into retail, you know, that number is still, you know, I mean, theoretically possible. We had 25% limitation for, for services or offices. And if the six existing offices and personal services were converted into restaurants or retail, that, you know, at some point, it could be below 25% and that 25% threshold would kick in. You understand my point?
Yeah.
Right now, obviously, you're looking at almost close to over 50% theoretically. If you would allow 25% plus the 20, 28% existing legally non-conforming, half of your town theoretically could be offices, personal services.
And with overtime.
With overtime.
Right, that's the only question I have.
Would anyone else think?
The definition of what we're doing and talking about with retail, how we're defining it, refiguring it, putting it on the table and adding numbers to it to make it manipulate to our position. I like it when we have very defined lines. Where we understand where and what you can do. You understand that we have opportunities to work with people who present to us and or the vote board for a PD or a new product that's coming to force and you want to see how it's going to look and add value to our community. And very difficult to, subjective changes to definitions of what is and what isn't. Very difficult to sit in this position, hear things being redefined, rewritten, rechanged. Oh, this could work. I have a very hard time. I have lines that are drawn and understand where I'm supposed to stay within my bounds. When I have subjective opinions based on design, I'm only looking at the values of design that are adding to my community and what's going to look good for history, placement, neighboring buildings, things that, things that we, we subjectively look at, which are normal. I have a hard time when somebody is trying to define something to fit into an avenue that's going to work for whatever purpose.
I guess, Michael, are there surrounding communities that are offering exclusive uses to commercial buildings?
I gave you a matrix, you know, like Darlington, Darlington does have allow.
I mean, like neighboring.
Well, we don't have any neighboring. I mean, the question is, if you want a vibrant downtown, you use best practices. So if you want to, you want to downtown, follow downtown, like Foxlake, you can do that. Lindenhurst doesn't have a downtown. Obviously, adjacent communities like Villa, you can follow the model like Villa. The question is, do you think that's a good model to follow? I would respectfully submit that those downtowns are not good in dynamic. In fact, they're struggling. So I think the question, it's really, it's not only a legal question, it's also just simply, you know, from a, from a good planning, what is a way to revitalize the downtown? I think we have an argument here that you have, you can have a vibrant downtown with no people. I think that's fundamentally flawed. I think that's, I think that's actually just not correct. You need people to have a vibrant downtown. How do you attract people? A very simple question. I think staff has attempted. I think the very spirit of this proposed change tries to address that. How do you address, how do you attract people to your downtown? The notion that the downtown is dominated by offices, personal services, manufacturing, they don't attract people. That's, that's simply good planning. And then to say that they do, I think you're factually wrong.
I, I don't know that that's what I'm saying. I just think that the outcome that you're looking for could have a different path.
I didn't say that you were saying that.
I just fear that if there is litigation against the village, that impact is huge, right? Like if there is somebody that fights us against this ordinance, that could potentially risk our cash flow. So that's, that's my.
I mean, that's a fair point, but that's also true with any zoning. I mean, to do, any type of zoning, is, is any type of zoning there of a, could be mitigated? Absolutely. The fact that we don't allow cannabis dispensaries, the fact that we don't allow small manufacturing, would that directly, you know, downtown? Would that directly be dedicated? Of course it could.
Yeah. This is much more limiting though.
You know, I think that one of the things I'd like to bring up that we need to remember is that this is a planning and zoning board. And so part of our duty is in planning. What does that mean? We need to plan for the future. We need to plan for, you know, tomorrow. I understand what you're saying, Mr. McCarty. I do understand that, but at the same time, having sat on the vision committee for two years and had the survey come back of over 700 people that responded to our survey, who said they wanted a vibrant downtown. They wanted to preserve the historic beauty of downtown and they wanted a vibrant downtown. And, I mean, I believe this, that survey is still, we can still take a look at it. We were amazed at how many people responded to it. And so I just think that we need to remember why we're here and that is for planning and then for zoning. And so in planning, if you look at some of these other towns, and I do believe Gray's Lake is one of them that does limit. Yeah, I, I believe that they do have, I thought I saw that in your report.
Yeah, I think they have some limitations on personal services.
And if we have a vibrant downtown, I just don't, I mean, I don't have a crystal ball, but I can't imagine that these building owners are going to have a hard time maintaining out their, their businesses. And the fact that they're still protected in that they're grandfathered in and if the same business comes in, we still have that option. I, I'm not understanding where it's that critical that we need to just say, no planning and let's just see how it, how it evolves.
Another thing I just want to make for clarification purposes, the 25% is, you know, my interpretation of that, right now we have 28%. My understanding was that they would be grandfathered in and that was for a period of two years or?
No, that continues until they, as long as they operate.
And so if they have an office, you know, let's say it's Edward Jones, just to throw it out as an example. And Edward Jones decides not to renew their lease and that landlord though could then bring another office similar.
Correct.
For ever because they already had an office in there. Okay, that was my first point. Secondly, I was, maybe I misunderstood, but the 25%, I thought we're at 28%. We were eventually going to get down to 25%. And now, so I was confused when we're talking 25% on top of 28% because that is not part of the vision.
Right.
In planning, I don't think, in creating the more vibrant downtown. So that was another point, I guess, we should clarify.
Yeah, no, it's an option. And that's why I wanted to have that discussion. I mean, I think that just from a good planning perspective, you want. I mean, I think that just from a good planning perspective, you want, you don't want a threshold of nowhere in twenty-five percent assuming allowing legally non-conforming uses. But the goal is to, again, maximize the number of retail stores and restaurants. That's generally what makes up a vibrant downtown and try to minimize the number of personal services and offices.
Okay. Mr. McCarty, you didn't make a comment?
Okay, so first of all, if they, in response to your one point you were bringing up, if this person has an office and this office will run a business and landlord wants to redo it as that office, it is legally non-conforming at that point and has to be approved again through here. So it's subjective. It's not just given that they're going to have that period at that point. Correct?
I disagree with you.
I mean, if it's already legally non-conforming, if you continue.
I don't want to argue. I mean, if you, I don't want to argue.
So, that's fine.
I mean, my interpretation, if it's legally conforming today, it would still.
If it stays unleashed, if it stays unleashed for a year or two.
That's correct.
Thank you.
That's correct.
Okay. I'm sorry, I missed the definition where it stepped over the bounds thereof.
Okay.
So it becomes legally non-conforming after the year.
Two years.
Two years, what I remember from the last. So I guess I was trying to get clarity on that again before we make a decision.
Correct.
Two years.
It's vacant for two years and it becomes, then you would have, they would have come and asked.
Before us and ask again.
So Mr. McCarty is correct in that.
Got it.
Gray's Lake, Gray's Lake does not have specific guidelines for offices and services. They have offices and services in their downtown. They've had them for many years and they've had a few come and go. So there's your community that you're asking. And planning and zoning is based on planning and zoning. Zoning is what we're discussing right now. We're changing the zoning for the building owners and the property or the business owners in those buildings. You're taking away the rights of building owners who lease them out and or run their own businesses. Taking away those rights. So that's the zoning portion. The planning portion is when a new person comes before us and they bring a plan and they show us the plan. And then we have our comments and we have our negotiations and we work with staff and the new owner of a business and or the building. We can define it and bring it into where it's going to work for us or not work for us. The vision that we're discussing from the vision of seven hundred people versus eighteen, what's our population now in Ania? Fourteen thousand. I got my point, at least, please. There's over eight thousand nine hundred homes in Ania. Seven hundred people are going to sit here and tell me that I should change my viewpoint of what I've been planning for for twelve years in this community and trying to help make sure we guide things to a good vision for our downtown. Each person should come before us and have their opportunity to present. Our regulations for zoning should stick where they're at and I shouldn't limit them for their future.
And how many building owners? How many, how many building owners?
Who have offices and personal services?
That own buildings between Orchard and Lake.
Oh, I didn't actually count them, but less than. That's fifty.
So seven hundred people who responded versus the fifty building owners and they're not here. Maybe they're on Zoom. No one's on Zoom?
Am I?
Two people on Zoom?
I truly, I truly excuse myself for interrupting, but we're now, now we're looking at some of the seven hundred to fifty.
Mr. McCarty. Are there any other commissioners? Okay. So at this point, is any, are we ready to make a motion?
Do we have any?
Oh, I'm sorry, public comment, excuse me, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
So at this time, management members, I think we do have some people on Zoom and we have somebody out in the audience.
Yes, I'm sorry.
So let's open it up for public comment.
Please stand up, state your name this morning.
My name is Michael O'Meara, one fourteen Oakwood Avenue, O'Gry. Apologize if I ramble a little bit. A little bit frustrating listening to everybody here tonight. I have a couple of questions to start out. One of the main questions is, who on this board has a vested interest, if any, of any of the businesses or properties making these decisions? Anyone? None? I think that is a no. Are all of you willing to take responsibility for any of the livelihoods that may be affected by the premature decision tonight? Are you all willing to take that responsibility for the livelihood that you're going to, that you may or may not affect? Well, you have a lot of, I'll get there, I apologize. Have any of you done your own research to see what negative results have come from making the similar decision in other, for other businesses and property owners in the other local areas? Have any of you done your own personal research? Why is staff asking the board to make decisions tonight with no set plan? Throughout the evening, everything's come up with, you've all had wonderful questions. You've asked a lot of statistics and numbers and everything else. Staff has come before you and said, well, we can change that, you know, we can do this, we can do that. How come they didn't come to you before with an exact plan? Something's set in stone. So we talk about foot traffic and what's, how to generate foot traffic. I've been to many village board meetings over the past years, whatever. And there's been a lot of talk about downtown. And a lot of that talk about downtown is, why are these businesses not open? What are the set hours of operation? What days do they operate? How in the world do you expect to generate foot traffic, even if you make this decision tonight? If there's no set hours of operation downtown, Saturday, Saturday mid, late morning, throughout early afternoon, seventy percent of the businesses were closed this weekend. Have any, did any of you come down? Did any of you see that? But yet you're willing to make a decision on other property owners that were open. Those businesses were open. And here you want to make that decision to dictate that they should change. We talk about Gray's Lake. That was something that was brought up. Twenty-plus years ago, I moved here, my wife and I moved here from Gray's Lake because they were willing to try, or trying to make this very same decision. The decisions that they made affected four very close friends and families. It bankrupted them. Put them out of business. One gentleman, they used condemnation. He was a sixty-four-year-old man. He owned a business on Route eighty-three. He was six months from retirement. They took his business and his property at fifty cents on the dollar. It's just one example of tyranny.
Mr. Green?
Name's Paul Green, four-three-two-two-five North Either Road, Ania. I just have a couple items I just want to bring up. I just, Village Hall is a service. It sits on a prime corner. So I imagine we might want to move ourselves to Village Hall a little bit since we're on one of the bus corners in the downtown area. And then you have to take into consideration that we have some major physical restraints here. We have the creek and railroad yards to the east. So that sort of cuts in your expansion on a lot of areas in the downtown. And I can tell you, I've been here forty-some years. When I came here forty years ago, we had vibrant retail downtown areas. Those are just context of the pair. Thank you.
Rachel, do we have any? Well, thank you. And so again, we are back to if someone like to make a motion.
Make the motion to the EZB twenty-one dash oh-seven.
Okay, we have a second.
Second.
Any questions?
I will say yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
No. No. Four yes, three no? Motion here? Okay. We now move to EZB twenty-one oh-seven dash oh-seven oh-six, twenty-one oh-six.
This matter regards to a concept plan for a property covering the seven-one-zero Anita Avenue. The applicant has asked Palat Management. The applicant this evening is seeking a concept plan for a potential multifamily development of approximately eight-point-three-seven acres on Anita Avenue, just north of Deepak. Again, I want to clarify, this is a concept application. So I want to basically clarify what the applicant is seeking is just general input, very informal input from the commission and the general concept. What we're not considering this evening is obviously architecture or order metrics or engineering. Those will all come through the site plan review. So if there is support for a concept, then the applicant will require to do a site plan review. As it relates to this concept, the applicant, the property currently, as we speak, is currently zone M-one. There's an existing light industrial building which is vacant just in the north on Anita Avenue. A portion, actually a large section of this, of eight-point-three-seven acres is actually wetlands, which is identified in the light brown areas and wetlands. And I'll allow Mr. Christensen, the land planner, to kind of walk you through some of the limitations to the property itself and the general philosophy behind the general concept itself. But there is some areas which are outside the wetlands and directly are outside the required buffer that would allow development. So the applicant has identified the potential of developing three buildings for multifamily apartments. Again, whenever looking at any type of use, it's also important to look at the uses surrounding the area. So this is kind of an interesting area. It has a mixture of uses to the north of the property. Again, there's a self-storage facility, which is zone M-one. To the south, there is, it's actually transitional core, but it's a small light industrial building which has industrial suites. To the west, again, it's transitional core, but that's currently the metro station. Site is adjacent to the metro station. And to the east is residential, which you can see the number of multifamily developments and townhomes and additional small apartment buildings on the east side of Abanea. So the question, generally, the area is generally mixed, mixed use. So the concept plan, the applicant's generally looking for some input. You can see, I'm going to allow the petition to kind of walk you through the actual concept plan. There would be one central access point, extensive open space, wetlands obviously incorporates extensive open spaces, a network of open space spaces throughout the overall site. In some substance, the applicant is proposing, again, three apartment buildings. So total, the applicant proposes incorporates a total of eighty-four units. There'll be two twenty-four unit buildings and one thirty-six unit building. As it relates to the overall density, the applicant has identified a density of ten units an acre. This site is in the Village Residential area of the Village of Copland, which identifies the general density between four to six units. But the applicant is seeking R-three zoning. R-three zoning does identify a maximum density of up to ten units an acre, which is consistent with multifamily. As it relates to conceptually parking, very quickly, the applicant has provided the required one-point-five parking spaces per unit as required in zoning ordinance. That comes to a total of a minimum of a hundred-and-twenty-six spaces. The applicant's overall site plan, I'm sorry, concept plan identifies a hundred-and-thirty-two spaces. The general question before the PZB is, is there general support for multifamily directly? Would there be general support to change the zoning to R-three zoning? What is the trend of development in this area? Is there a need for multifamily in Village of Ania? And if there is, is this the appropriate location? The applicant has been attracted to the site because it is adjacent to the metro site. So it would be obviously adjacent to mass transportation. It's also fairly within a walkable area to the downtown. So that's some of the perspective of why the applicant believes it may be appropriate to change the zoning for this area to R-three or what he's argued is a need for more multifamily development in Village of Ania. One of the things the staff has identified long-term, are there opportunities to generally convert some of these obsolete industrial areas to commercial uses? What you're seeing factually throughout communities now is uses like small distilleries, micro breweries, restaurants are moving into like industrial areas. Also, they're obviously attracting commercial, I'm sorry, residential development to some of these areas as a change, as obviously the needs were. Industry has changed and the question is, are the industrial floor plates or buildings throughout along Anita Avenue, are they still functional or are they obsolete? So that may be an appropriate discussion concurrent with considering this overall concept plan. So again, general questions, is there demographic transition that reflects a population that it's looking for? Rantos began to remind you that two-thirds of all households in the Chicago metropolitan area are generally households without children. Clarity, if you look at, saw the census results for Ania, it's generally stagnant growth. You had two-hundred people in over ten years. The question is, do you want residential development? Is a community that's not growing, is that a healthy community? Is this an appropriate location? I think that's a. I think that's the most, perhaps the most fundamental question. Is this a, is this appropriate location for multi-family? Is there an opportunity for redevelopment to Anita Avenue corridor, which perhaps is a larger question than what the concept application, concept is actually proposing? But that's a fair point, taking into consideration for long-term planning. And if there is support for any type of redevelopment, what would that look like? So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Christensen, the land planner for the applicant, and he can actually walk you through the plan, concept plan.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gary. We'd like you to surrender.
It's a public hearing? Oh, okay, that's fine. I was asked by the ashes to look at this piece of property. They purchased it with the intent of having the industrial building there to the north and which recently has been remodeled. And that piece of property is currently going through paperwork to split it off into one 24 acres piece, which results in 8.27 acres left that we based our design on. The picture there in the aerial photo kind of shows the surrounding land use is what we kind of really looked at at first. I looked at, and there were a number of different housing choices on the east side of Anita Avenue. But really what struck me was the proximity of the property to the metro station. It's literally on the point where people get on the trains, it's right across from there. And the access to that could be easily from this site to the train. So a person could live in this complex here and directly to the train. Very convenient, plus they could go directly to the, to the businesses that, the metro stop across from that. That would also be, they'll all be within walking distance. Seems to be a trend now to do this, multi-family within suburban area, be next to mass transit, in particular next to metro tracks. In fact, in some communities, they've dropped the parking requirement. They're not looking to do that here, but they're really trying to encourage this type of development. Next thing when we looked at it, I looked at it, obviously, there's a lot of issues with wetlands in this property. Before we do anything else, we need to get a wetland delineation. We did. Paul Bunk, the environmental, went out there, flagged it, category, did a report, followed up the survey of all the flags. We know exactly where those wetlands are. We submitted that report and map to US Army Corps of Engineers, and they indicated that the larger wetland to the east is under their jurisdiction, smaller one on the tracks is not their jurisdiction. So we know, we knew what the parameters for property were. I next went in and just conceptually placed some buildings in there, a 24-unit and 136-unit. I could accommodate those buildings, which is 84 units, which conforms to the R3 building. Still come up with required parking, over the required parking. Way the configuration of the wetlands were, those two locations across it at the nearest points, whether they would be food entrances into the state. Feel you'd be eligible to get the wetland permits to cross there, which would be a road crossing. Much easier. With the ashes, they own other rental properties, Lake County and Kenosha County, thriving business here in Antioch. How many employees? 125 employees, and they look for housing to public, to a people's hand for a multi-family housing. This site will not only accommodate an existing industrial building, but will allow fully development, family development, close proximity to other housing. My understanding that one triangle recently resolved, kind of, the trend there is... But I really think what's really kind of neat about this, it's a unique site, has me so wetlands and buildings, which is something that's got to be, I think, really real well to live if you were so... Most people in Antioch. With that, I, we're here to answer any questions. Again, it's a process of progress, a lot of work to do. Anytime, obviously, we could get it to sell. I would like to, I'd suggest you come here tonight to try to keep that...
Thank you. Ms. Madigan, you have any questions?
To do, so the building that is currently there, you would keep and operate as it is?
Yep. Just going to...
Ryan?
Yeah, the access to the metro station. Is that difficult to get a, to get, so you could put a pedestrian way across the railroad tracks right there at the station? I know other places, it's really tough to get.
It's tough with railroads, if you want to be tough.
Yep.
But I think with, this is something that Metro's encouraging.
Okay.
And I think the village has control of the train station. I think through Metro and the village, it would be something... Was the railroad alone? You're right, it's difficult. They can touch it.
Yeah, because they have the big barricade fence down the middle right now, so you can't... Because they have all the trains have to, all the passengers on one side of the tracks, not on, only station on one side. So I'm just wondering how difficult that is.
Many stations on the metro lines have both sides.
Yep.
Ms. Sam.
So I, my only question for now is the, you, you mentioned there would be two access points, which would be across the wetlands, and I'm not that familiar with what that would entail or how easy it is to get the permit for that. Maybe you could speak to that a little bit more? I don't know if you're knowledgeable.
Yeah, I mean, the wetland permits, to fulfill wetlands, you know, you can permit and there's some mitigation that you can, what the Army Corps watches to look at. In this case, there are no alternatives. Road crossing is much different than the regular. You have a right to get the property. So in getting to there, that, you know, you can span it completely. In fact, maybe even if you have a lot of permits, but I'm not sure. But usually it's, you know, you put some bikes underneath it. But you have to minimize what it's doing.
Right.
Okay, that was, I think, my only question for now.
Mr. McCarty?
When you're mitigating wetlands, it's what, what to what?
Well, on a regular permit, it's, it depends on the quality of the wetland, and if you're, if there's a wetland bank in the area.
There is.
And in this particular case with road crossing, I doubt if they have to mitigate.
They would probably not have to mitigate. Span.
Hey, you'd look at the alternative.
And that's Army Corps of Engineers wetlands, so that's on the National Wetland Registry for what's there.
It's, it's under the federal waters.
Yeah. The other is smaller, it's on the Lake County.
Yeah, there's...
The site to the north, now this is a total acreage, including the M1.
Total acreage including the M1 is over nine acres.
And you're going to separate the two, so the one to the north is going to be 1.1 or?
1.44.
1.44. So the 1.44 has so much in non-imperious land that's there presently. Is there any water detention that's going to be triggered for that space after it's been separated?
No.
No new imperious. And typically, when we do an imperious site that's something over an acre, we have to provide water detention. Separating if it's becoming... And just, just a definition important. If there's, if there's water detention that, that could be needed or not needed based on definition, don't know. And whatever, obviously, the, the, I mean, stormwater management would give that definition for that. No license through Lake County, so that would be the village, our intention. We are certified. It's not, it's not the most unimpacted, so it's, it's not that much too much. But separating it is giving it its own life, on its own space for its own purpose, which it does. Rest of it is going to be multi-family. And how you count what happens with the wetlands would affect or possibly affect your parking?
Uh, no, I mean, we know where those...
Pretty good shape there?
Pretty good shape, yeah.
Two-story units?
Uh, two and a half.
Two and a half story units?
That was a thought with this, we haven't talked in our...
Okay. Common entrance per unit?
No, the common entrance per, per twelve.
Per twelve, so it's definitely a rental.
That's not...
And then I did see the stretch where you had to the platform. That's a possible future crossing, it looks at the platform on the other side from the train?
Yeah. Definitely.
And you're, you're in communications, obviously, to the village and...
Have not contacted the train yet. We, we have just thought.
Canadian Railway, is it? Canadian National?
Yeah, and I'm not sure where that breaks down.
Sure. No, I, I like the concept, and it does go well with that area with the apartments across the street and the park and some of the community things that are happening there. I do like the separation for the, you know, M1 to, to that and the half, I mean, it's kind of much more fun with seeing that as new development.
Ms. Carstensen?
I like that it brings more people downtown. I appreciate that this offers a different type of living, and I don't know if you were going to talk about what Michael and staff proposed, but I, I really appreciate that staff raised that question about the Anita corridor, because I agree. I just don't know, again, who are the main street, what incentives do you have to be provided, or how to attract businesses down there. But I think it's a great idea.
Mr. Turner?
I think majority of my questions have been answered by all commissioners here. I, just a couple comments. I, I like the idea. I like the area. I think it fits, as long as it, you know, follows all parameters there, to Mr. McCarty's point, you know, Centennial Park there, fits. Just a thought that I had, and maybe a concern talking about trying to put the crossway there. There is a skate park right there as well, promotes a lot, a lot of children there, so just food for thought, potential for a lot of kids running around, potential barrier. But other than that, I think you can work through, and I don't know, I don't really have any, any issues with it.
My only comment is the traffic. How would, how would, how would that be impacted with Anita Street and Depot? I mean, it gets really backed up there anyway, so now you're talking quite a few cars.
Yeah. Generally, per unit, you get about seven trips per day, so let's say, let's do the math here, 550 trips at a point. I, I think in relation of it being multi-family, and if it, if it was industrial, I think it would be less than industrial would generate comparable.
Mr. Ray?
What is... The, again, these are going to be rental, like, yeah, but this is not going to be like a low-income type house, like, tiny type apartments, are they?
No, like, why, I'm sorry, absolutely not.
Okay.
Anyone else? I just offer my own information, but I think it's relevant. I mean, and maybe Cheryl, you could speak to this. I mean, do you think that we, we, is there a need for this type of rental in the area? I know being Realtor, showing property, that would be the only other thing, I think, and it was a, a point that the staff mentioned too, I mean, what, is there, is there a need for this type of development?
In my profession...
Or is it already fulfilled in our community?
It really matters, but, uh, no.
Something to think about.
Uh, you know, I, there's, there, there's a need for all types of houses. And so, is there a need specifically for these apartments? You know, I think I'd need more information to say, you know, how many apartment buildings are out there versus, but again, there's always a need for being versatile
Right.
in, in the housing market and price-wise.
Yeah, and I'm, I mean, I'm trying to think of how many of the other multi-families have access to the metro. These are things, and there aren't any, are there, in Antioch, that are walkable to the...
Well, there are some right across the street.
Besides Anita Terrace?
Well, yeah, and then there's, I think there are eight units, are they? There's like three buildings of eight units on Anita?
Yes, there, there are several other apartment buildings just south of Anita Terrace.
Yeah.
Smaller ones, they're small apartment buildings. So the question is, there a need, I think, that their answer is, there's a need for quality apartments. We have some problem apartment complexes that we're working on.
Right.
Along Main Street. So, so I think there's...
Yes, I think we've talked about some of those a long time ago, and it became...
So I think we're in the process of working on something to be proactive about some of our problem properties. But there's a need for quality apartments for profession, young professionals.
Okay. Oh, yes, Ms. Madigan?
I was just going to say, I think, a lot of people have, you know, led to, one, it's a more of a higher quality apartment, you're close to the metro, right, which is also plus, so there's a lot of people who are willing to pay more in rent because they don't know what's going to happen to it, and then to be able to walk to downtown, I think it should be very good parking.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So at this time, I believe we would need the motion. Mr. Gary again?
You just want your input, you know? I think that the general input that we've been pretty informal, probably...
in formal process, there's no formal motion, this will go to the board, and if applicant gets positive feedback from the board, then they'll probably proceed with the site plan review, you'll see this whole project again with much, much, much more detail.
Okay. Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank, thank you for investing in the community.
So do we have any other business? If not, a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?